I'll call this meeting to order on Monday, October the first, 2018. Want to welcome everyone, very glad to have us tonight, Pastor Brian Taylor of the Life Church Smyrna Assembly of God at 4100 King Springs Road, who will come forward, give us our invocation, lead us in the place of the flag. So would everyone please rise?
Mayor Bacon, City Council, will you join me in a moment of prayer before we begin our meeting tonight? Dear Father, we thank you for this time we're able to come together as a city to talk about issues relevant to our city. Father, I pray you'd be in guidance of tonight's talks, Father. You'd bring peace, Father, and you have your will be done in this place tonight. In Jesus' name we pray, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before you, Brian, before you, is there, I don't like talking about folks' health problems. I know the pastor, Pastor Shell's been a little under the weather. How's he doing? Because I, for the first time, I text him and it, I don't think it went through, so.
Right, yes, sir. He had a successful surgery and he's recovering. He's actually in Florida right now on vacation, so he's recovering.
Oh, so he's recuperating.
Yeah, he's good, yeah. He's got surgery done, he's recovering, and he preached Sunday, so he's doing a lot better.
And it was kidney stones?
Yes, sir, kidney stones. Doing a lot better, though.
I mean, good company, so.
Exactly, yeah.
Good deal, well.
I'll let him know you asked, bud.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. For those folks that are looking for new church or new in town, I'm sure the folks at Life Church Smyrna Assembly of God would love to have you there in the curb there on King Springs Road, right past Griffin Middle School. So, thank y'all very much. Agenda changes, the only thing that we have on the agenda is that when we get to item four B, which is a public hearing, that will be tabled until November the fifth. Other than that, the agenda is exactly as submitted. Under the Merrill Report, 2018-4, they were forced to recognize City of Smyrna employees Christie Manna and Rebecca Power as recipients of the City of Smyrna Award for Ongoing Excellence in Customer Service and the Johnquill Award for Service Excellence in Action. I'll let Ms. Tammy Sallor Jones address that issue.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. I'm gonna have Ashley Yeoman, our ICMA Management Fellow, tell you about the award and to share with you information about the two recipients. And I will come down and join Ashley.
Good evening, everyone. We have two great City of Smyrna employees. We would like to honor an award tonight for our quarter two of 2018 Employee Customer Service Awards. The first award is the City of Smyrna Award for Ongoing Excellence in Customer Service, which is awarded for going above and beyond in delivering customer service to members of the public and/or staff. Christie Manna is awarded this award for ongoing excellence in customer service. Christie serves as the Administrative Assistant for the Smyrna Fire Department. She is nominated by Deputy Chief Brian Marcos. Along with being a positive representative for the city's fire department, Christie genuinely cares about delivering excellent quality work. Her attention to detail and organizational skills are proof that she is always willing to go above and beyond the call of duty in pursuit of excellence.
Well, I know her boss is here. I don't know if he wants to say anything, Roy, Chief Bacon?
Thank you, Mayor. I just really here in support of Christie, and she's very deserving of this award. And we'd like to thank the city and thank the council and city administrator for recognizing her. She really does a fantastic job. You know, a lot of people, it's an easy thing to say that she's the glue that holds everything together, but in our case, it really is true. She does a fantastic job.
I would say, if truth be known, she probably knows more about the department than you do.
I probably wouldn't argue with you.
Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you.
Our second award is the Johnquill Award of Service Excellence in Action, which is awarded for going above and beyond in response to an event or incident in delivering customer service. Rebecca Power is awarded this award tonight. She serves as the Youth Services Librarian at the Smyrna Public Library. She was nominated by Mary Moore, the library director, after Mary received the following unsolicited email from a customer. "Just had a conversation with Rebecca in the youth department of your library regarding some needs I had for a high schooler. She was such a big help and answered all of my questions, even about safety concerns I had. She even called me back to clarify some information. Thank you for having her there. You are lucky to have her."
Scott, if you could get over to your left a little bit, I could get in the picture.
Oh, there he is. One, two, three.
So many times, we never know. I mean, all the time, we never know what our employees do. But we appreciate both of y'all for both going beyond your normal duties and taking care of our citizens. Thank y'all very much. And as an extra award, you don't have to stay for the meeting any longer. Also, under the Merrill Report, this is, we have an election coming up sometime in November. I always give folks the opportunity, if you are running for office, to come forward briefly, tell us who you are, and don't go over 30 seconds. So anybody running for office, I know I've had three notes sent to me that says, "You have a candidate for the Senate in the audience who wants to speak." I know that, so thank you. Yes?
Hi, good evening. My name is Leah Aldridge, and I'm the Republican nominee for State Senate for the sixth district. The six covers Smyrna and Vinings here in Cobb County, Buckhead and Sandy Springs in Fulton County. Thank you so much, Mayor Bacon and City Council members, for allowing me to introduce myself to you once again. I am so proud to be standing here. You know, I've knocked a lot of doors in Smyrna, from Williams Park, all over Smyrna. I've met with your principals at Campbell High School, Mrs. Mize at Green Acres Elementary. I ran the Smyrna 5K this Labor Day. I've been to the Smyrna Rotary. I've had cups of coffee at Rev Coffee, been to upward football games, and I have been listening to the citizens of Smyrna. The reason I've done this is because I want to understand the unique character and quality of this city if I'm going to serve as a state senator. And I want to assure you that today is a continuation of something I started a year ago when I first introduced myself to you. I see myself in partnership with you to hopefully work together to ensure that Smyrna's future is bright. I'd be honored to have your support and the vote of any citizens who are listening today on cable news. Thank you very much for the time. To introduce myself again, I'm Leah Aldridge, State Senate for the sixth district. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else running for office? Just briefly, I just want to mention, under the Merrill Report, that Smyrna was recognized in Money Magazine as one of the top 50 communities in the United States to live. And we're very proud of that, something we didn't know about until after we got it. But I think we're ranked number 44. There was only two cities in the state of Georgia, and the other one was Alpharetta. I'm not sure where they were ranked. I think they'd been 25th or something, so pretty neat honor for us, so. Item four is land issue zoning and annexation. A 2018-411 Authorization for Apartment Name Change from WDR-4 Wood Johnquill LLC DBA Alta at Johnquill to the new name DBA Sync, SYNC at Johnquill, located at 1455 Spring Road Southeast with Carol Moore as the agent. Is Ms. Moore by any chance here? Anything else you can add to that, Ms. Jones?
Alta at Johnquill, they requested to change their name to Sync at Johnquill. The proper name change application has been reviewed and approved by the Fire Marshal, Building Inspector, City Engineer, 911 Communications, Water Department, and the City Marshals, as well as reported to the Business License Officer. Staff does recommend approval of the name change.
Okay. This is not a public hearing, so I'll turn this over to Ms. Blackman, who represents this district. Ms. Blackman?
Thank you, Mayor. I was hoping that the Agent Carol Moore would be here, because I wanted to definitely ask that question about, or ask her a question as to where the Sync at Johnquill comes from, which is a really cool name. So, but with that, if we don't have any other questions from the council, Mayor, I would like to have us to approve 2018-411 Authorization for Apartment Name Change for WDR-4 Wood Johnquill LLC DBA Alta at Johnquill to the new name DBA Sync at Johnquill, located at 1455 Spring Road Southeast with Carol Moore as the agent.
A motion and a second to approve this request for name change. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion? It's approved seven zero. Item number four B, under Land Issue Zonies and Annexation, 2018-347, Public Hearing Code Amendment to Sections 402, 712, 714, 716, and 720 of the zoning ordinance are proposed to add definitions related to breweries and distilleries and to list breweries and distilleries as permitted uses within General Commercial, Light Industrial, Central Business District, and mixed-use zoning districts, City of Smyrna. As I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, this will be tabled until the fifth of November. Mr. Tim Goode?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We're going to move to table this. So I move to table 2018-347. Code Amendment to Section 402, 712, 714, 716, and 720 of the zoning ordinance are proposed to add definitions related to breweries and distilleries and to list breweries and distilleries as permanent uses within the General Commercial, Light Industrial, Central Business District, and Mixed Use Zoning Districts, City of Smyrna.
Second.
Motion to table from November 5th, all those in favor of the motion? It's approved seven zero. The next items, C, D, E, F, G, and H, all deal with zoning amendments or changes in the zoning ordinance. We will vote on these separately. I think what we need to do is to, we're going to turn this over to Mr. Ken Sodif, but these are all public hearings. I think you're going to get them all at the same time, Ken? Is that correct?
Yes, Mayor. I think it's probably easier for us to go right through and then we can vote on them independently.
All right, I'll read. C, Ordinance 2018-13, Public Hearing, General Code Amendments for Corrections and Updates for Zoning Ordinances, City of Smyrna. D, Ordinance 2018-14, Public Hearing Application for MAP Amendments, Updates for Zoning Ordinance, City of Smyrna. E, Ordinance 2018-15, Public Hearing, Mixed Use District Update to the Zoning Ordinance, City of Smyrna. F, Ordinance 2018-16, Public Hearing Code Amendments to the Zoning Ordinance to Add New Single Family Residential Zoning Districts, City of Smyrna. G, Ordinance 2018-17, Public Hearing Section 704 RAD, Update to the Zoning Ordinance, City of Smyrna. And H, Ordinance 2018-18, Public Hearing, Zoning Ordinance Table, Update, City of Smyrna. Ms. Jones, you want to give the quick background on how we got here? And then we'll turn it over and let Ken, if that's okay with council, will do the first one and go from there.
The Community Development Department reviewed the city's zoning ordinances. And to make language more clear and to clean up existing areas that need updating, they brought forth these following ordinances to the Planning and Zoning Commission. And so with that said, I'm going to turn it over to Ken to give you more specifics on each particular upcoming agenda item.
And as we go through this, each one of them, they're all public hearings. So that means that if anyone wants to make any public comment concerning any of these issues, we will give you that time during the agenda to speak. So we'll start off with Ken, and you go from there.
Thank you, Mayor. As Ms. Sallor Jones has indicated, there are a variety of reasons that these are coming to you. Some has to do that you've actually requested them in our retreats. Some has to do that they were suggested in previous studies that we did over last year. Some were suggested in our comprehensive plan. So over the last 12 to 18 months, we've had a variety of reasons to do this. The issue that I had put on our work program for our FY '19 budget was to get started on that. So this is the first phase of these amendments. We will bring these to you more or less every quarter. Not necessarily the quarter as the calendar falls, but every three or four months, we will bring them another batch to you. So we actually, we actually had brought seven to you. You've tabled the one at our request so that we could have a little additional work on that. But the other six are in this presentation here, and I'll try to be as succinct but as clear as I can. The first round, which would be item C, has to do with general corrections and update. And as you know, anytime you do an ordinance, there's going to be a typo, or there's going to be a grammatical mistake, or maybe words have changed. Maybe there's a better way to say stuff. And that's indeed what we have done. This is really cleaning up those kind of typos. There's really three main changes that we're dealing with here, which are shown on the screen here. In section 715, you can see that we've taken out and encouraged the continued concentration of tourist service. That's a repeated phrase. We don't need it in there twice. Then we talk about not more than six dwelling units shall be permitted in a single-family attached building. We have that elsewhere. It just needs to be more consistent there. So it's sort of a cleanup issue. And then the last one, we feel has now gotten to be an invalid paragraph. I think it started out initially with a good intent, but through the years, it has not been used. And both the city attorney and I have some concerns about its due process issue. And that has to do with the status of a rezoning. If you do not obtain a building permit, then it automatically goes back to its original state. That automatic aspect gives us due process. So we are recommending that that whole paragraph be amended. So those are the three major changes in item C. Now, on item D, this is an issue of how we actually process requests and how that has changed through the years. And unfortunately, the ordinance itself did not keep up with the changes that we have made. There's actually seven changes that we are recommending. I'm not necessarily going to go through each and every one of those, but this will bring the actual paperwork, the applications that we give out in line, or bring the ordinance in line with how we actually practice our work. Whether that's listing stuff that's already been listed on our applications or adding additional information, we practice that. These amendments here in D bring the two parties together there. Item E, and there you can, just jumping back, you can see that there's the seven that we were talking about. Item E has to do with our mixed use. This is an issue that was picked up as a result of our comprehensive plan because we have added the term Regional Activity Center. And we need to amend our ordinance in a couple places. There are three amendments that we are proposing to do that. But basically, this is generated because of our comp plan. Now that we have an option, Regional Activity Center, we need to actually put that in our purpose and intent of that M U district. And while we were doing that, we realized that there is a typo or someone needed words in there as well. F is dealing with the addition of two new districts. Both the R eight and the R 10 zoning districts are proposed. Right now, we do not have the ability, other than our RAD district, to really deal with developments that are in that three-four, three-five, three-six units per acre and up to six units. There's sort of a gap between those two points. And the RAD has been used in the past to fill that gap. What we are proposing, which is also recommended as part of the comp plan, is that we add both an R 10, which would add up to a little over four units an acre, as well as an R eight classification that would allow a little over five units an acre to sort of fill that gap. So you see, we would be going from that mid, that sort of three and a half, and then we have a little over four, then a little over five. And then the RAD allows up to six. So we're filling in those gaps with the addition of these new districts. So what you see here is R 10 and R eight that's on the screen. And because we use what is known in the planning profession as a pyramidal ordinance, we don't have to list every single use. We just refer back to the previous district, and then that'll refer back. And ultimately, you get all of the uses that you need. As a result of that, we don't have to have a real big amendment here. And as you can see, in the R 10 district, it refers to everything in the R 12. So that's how the ordinance works. So, you know, staff has encouraged and Planning Commission concurred as well for the addition of both an R eight and an R 10 zoning district. G is dealing with our RAD districts. And we are suggesting that we actually rename our RAD district, not drastically. We're just reversing some of the letters. Instead of residential attached, detached, we are recommending that it's really residential detached and attached because most of the time, we have emphasized, and the development community has responded, that it is a detached, it's more of a detached zoning classification. Therefore, we feel that, in this case, the D needs to come before the A, so that we are asking that it be switched to RDA. As a result of that, there's reference throughout the ordinance that deal with RDA. And we would just change those uses, as you see here, that's up on the screen. That's all we're doing. We're changing RAD to RDA. We're not changing any standards within that district. We're just changing how it's represented. And then finally, on H, there are three tables in the ordinance. Well, there's actually multiple tables in the ordinance. But three of the tables are affected because of the changes we have made tonight, as well as bringing it back up to date. We had noticed there were a couple changes that had occurred in previous updates that did not make it into those tables. Obviously, you know, we are recommending R 10 and R eight. That needs to be added. That's sort of an easy one. But issues like the mixed-use zoning district, as well as some errors. So you've got, this is sort of a table of contents where we're introducing that aspect, as well as the table that has to do with what the actual requirements within the district are in terms of setbacks and minimum lot sizes and the like. And then the final table picks that, is a continuation of that for the commercial aspects, that we're bringing that all together. Now, that's it, but I also handed out tonight an update on R eight and R 10 that we had picked up with the assistance of Councilwoman Wilkinson. picked up with the assistance of Councilwoman Wilkinson, that we had inadvertently, in the R ten, we had said that it would reflect a medium density, and we've given you an update to that. It really is supposed to say moderate density, which is a little bit lower. And then in the R eight, we actually said it was medium to high, and it really should just be medium. So, we've given you those updates, and so my request would be that when you adopt, that you would adopt based on what we have presented to you tonight, plus what we've handed out regarding those density aspects. With that, I, I feel like I've gotten through those fairly quickly. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have, but they really are pretty succinct, I hope. And with that, Planning Commission and staff are recommending adoption.
All right. Well, let's do this. We'll start, we have to vote on these individually. So, we're going to start with C, which is the General Code Amendment for Corrections and Updates. This is a public hearing. If anyone here would like to make any public comments concerning Item C. Let the record show that there is none, and then I'll ask Mr. Tim Goode, who chairs this committee, to make the motion. And also, if there's any questions after he makes a motion, then we can answer those.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank Ken and his group for digging into the ordinances and starting the process that'll go on for some time, of continue to refine and improve our zoning codes to be suitable to where we are here in Smyrna currently in our, for zoning needs. Anyway, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to motion to approve ORD 2018-13, General Code Amendments for Corrections and Updates for Zoning Ordinance, City of Smyrna.
Second.
Motion second. Is there any discussion? Is none of those in favor of the motion? Approve seven zero. Item D, Ordinance 2018-14, Public Hearing. This is for the application for MAP amendments. Is there anyone, this is a public hearing. Is anyone here that would like to make any public comment concerning this issue? At the record show, there is none. Mr. Tim Goode.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Move to approve ORD 2018-14, Application for MAP Amendments, Update to the Zoning Ordinance, City of Smyrna.
Motion second. Is in discussion. All those in favor of the motion, please vote. Approve seven zero. Item E, Ordinance 2018-15, Public Hearing, Mixed Use District, Update to the Zoning Ordinance, City of Smyrna. This is a public hearing. Is anyone here like to make any public comment concerning this issue? At the record show, there is none. Mr. Tim Goode.
Thank you, sir. Move to approve ORD 2018-15, Mixed Use District, Update to the Zoning Ordinance, City of Smyrna.
Motion second. In discussion. All those in favor of the motion? Approve seven zero. Item F, Ordinance 2018-16, Public Hearing, Code Amendment to the Zoning Ordinance to Add a New Single Family Residential Zoning District, City of Smyrna. This is a public hearing. If anyone here would like to make any public comment concerning this issue? At the record show, there is none. Mr. Tim Goode.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This one has maybe a little bit more of an impact on, I think, on how the city council will do business, creating the R ten and R eight zoning districts allow us to stick more closely to a defined ordinance versus using RAD and with a wide range of variances to accommodate particular needs. So, this is, I believe, a nice addition to our zoning code and makes it easier for us as, as a body to have a more formal, appropriate code. So, therefore, I move, Mr. Mayor, I move to approve ORD 2018-16, Code Amendment to the Zoning Ordinance to Add New Single Family Residential Zoning Districts, City of Smyrna.
Motion second. In discussion. All those in favor of the motion, please vote. Approve seven zero. Item G, Ordinance 2018-17, Public Hearing, Section 704, RAD, Update to the Zoning Ordinance, City of Smyrna. This is a public hearing. Is anyone here that would like to make any public comment concerning this ordinance amendment? At the record show, there is none. Mr. Tim Goode.
Thank you, sir. Move to approve ORD 2018-17, Section 704, RAD, Update to the Zoning Ordinance, City of Smyrna.
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion? Approve seven zero. Item H, Ordinance 2018-18, Public Hearing, Zoning Ordinance Table, Update, City of Smyrna. Anyone, this is a public hearing. Anyone here that would like to make any public comment concerning this issue? At the record show, there is none. Mr. Tim Goode.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Move to approve ORD 2018-18, Zoning Ordinance Table Updates, City of Smyrna.
Motion second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the, of the motion? Approve seven zero. Item five is previous licenses. We have nothing. Item six is formal business, A 2018-401, Approval of the Reappointment of George Davis to the Civil Service Board for a two-year term to expire November 16, 2020. Ms. Jones, is there any background on that?
The Civil Service Board is comprised of three members, each serving two-year terms. One seat is appointed by the council, currently held by George Davis. One elected by fire police personnel, currently Barb Allen, but up for reelection. And one appointed by the other two board members, currently John Davis. George Davis's term is set to expire November 16, 2018, but has requested reappointment to the Civil Service Board. Staff does recommend appointment of Mr. Davis.
Ms. Blackburn.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I would like to move that for approval of 2018-401, Approval of the Reappointment of George Davis to the Civil Service Board for a two-year term to expire November 16, 2020.
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion? Approve seven zero. Before we go into bed, I want to thank Ken and his department for the, all the changes that we had approved tonight. Thanks for your hard work, and thanks for not taking all night. I figured we'd be here at 11 o'clock, the way that sometimes you go on, but thank you, thank y'all very much. Item B, under formal business, 2018-415, Authorization of a Contract Extension with Zaxter Inc. for Bike Share Program Services until March the 8th, 2019, in the amount of $14,400. Ms. Jones, the background, please.
Zaxter Incorporated is planning to transition to a new regional bike system. The target date to relaunch this new regional program will be the spring of 2019. Rather than extend the current program with the city for another full year, Zaxter is offering a short-term extension for six months. The only changes to the contract will be the new end date of March 8th, 2019, and a reduced price of $120 per bike, down from $130 per bike per month. Staff recommends approval of the contract extension with Zaxter for Bike Share Program Services until March 8th, 2019, in the amount of $14,400.
Ms. Wilkinson.
Thank you. So, if there's anybody that would like to have any questions, I don't know if there's anybody to speak on this. Richard's not here, is he? Is Richard here?
No.
Do you want to speak about it? Okay, thanks.
Well, overall, the program's been very successful. There's 4,000 active users, and as Ms. Sadler-Jones said, this is simply extending our program and saving some money in the process.
If there's no other questions, I would like to move to approve Item 6B, 2018-415, Authorization of a Contract Extension with Zaxter for Bike Share Program Services until March 8th, 2019, in the amount of $14,400.
Motion second to approve this contract extension. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion? Approve seven zero. Item seven is commercial building permits. We have none. Item eight is consent agenda. Ms. Jones, will you please read the consent agenda for council's approval?
The consent agenda reads as follows. Item A, Approval of September 17th, 2018, Mayor and Council Meeting Minutes. Item B, Approval of the September 17th, 2018, Pre-Council Meeting Minutes. Item C, Approval of the August 30th, 2018, Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes. Item D, Approval of the September 13th, 2018, Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes. Item E, Approval of the City's Wellness Program Renewal with Corporate Health Partners and Authorize Mayor to Execute Related Documents. Item F, Approval of Use for Council Chambers for Vinings Forest HOA Meeting, Tuesday, October 16th, 2018, from 6:30 PM to 8:00 PM. Item G, Approve the Use of Linear Park on Concord Road for an Event Titled Seeing Red Chili Cookoff, Organized and Managed by Wade's Fine Eatery Food Time Emporium on October 20th, 2018, from 1:00 PM until 6:00 PM, to Include Alcohol Sales on the Restaurant Property. Extension of Premises for Alcohol Sales to Include but Be Limited to Parking Spaces Adjacent to the Restaurant for the Purpose of Dispense, of Beer Dispensing from a Single Beer Trailer Station, Along With Carrying Privileges of Legally Purchased Beverages for Attendees Into the Park Property, the Area Designated as the Event Space for the Duration of the Event.
Mr. Mayor, move approval of the consent agenda.
Motion second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor of the motion, please vote. Approve seven zero. Committee reports will start tonight with Mr. Derek Norton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to remind everybody that this week is Public Safety Appreciation Week. We, we had the pleasure of attending a breakfast this morning, recognizing our public safety personnel, and, and some from Smyrna were recognized for exceptional service, examples of exceptional service recently, and that was Lieutenant Tommy Bates and Lieutenant J. P. Paul from the Fire Department, and Officer Heather Clemmons from the Smyrna Police Department. They were award nominees. So, if, if you go about your week, I encourage you to say an extra thank you to the men and women who protect us every day. With that, I yield.
Ms. Andrea Bluestein.
Yes, Your Honor. I don't have anything this evening. Thank you.
Ms. Marilyn Blackburn.
Thank you, sir. I would like to just follow up with Councilwoman Norton. I also attended the breakfasts this morning for our public safety personnel, Public Safety Week, and want to send out a congratulations to those, all of the individuals that were honored. And just as he said, if you have an opportunity to go by us, the fire station or the police department, and say hello and thank you, that would be most appreciative. Also, just wanted to say, had a great time this weekend at the North Georgia State Fair. It was really a wonderful event and well-attended. Also, had an opportunity to hang out with a lot of our furry animals this weekend at the wolf stalks. So, hats off to Jennifer Bennett and our Smyrna crew for doing a great job with, with that as well. And then, just want to welcome two new members to our staff, Herman Hunter, who is our new Code Enforcement Officer, and William Parker, our Economic Development Coordinator. Just say thanks and welcome aboard, guys. We look forward to working with you. And one last thing, just want to wish the family of Michael Dorsey, my deepest condolences. We lost a dear Smyrna resident on October, September the 19th, the accident that happened on Church Road between the motorcycle and the car. So, again, just sending my condolences out to the family. And with that, Mayor, I yield.
Mr. Corker Welch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just want to make sure and invite everybody to the grand reopening of the Smyrna Century Garden behind the Community Center this coming Saturday, October 6th, from 10 to 11 a.m. And that Community Garden has been restored, restored by the John Quill Garden Club. So, everybody, please come out 10 o'clock in the morning. Love to have you there. With that, I yield.
Ms. Susan Wilkinson.
Thank you, Mayor. I did want to say, I also attended the luncheon, recognizing the public safety, safety officers, and I really enjoyed hearing about the stories, and they do a wonderful job. And I want to remind people to make sure you thank your public safety, safety officers this week for the, the work that they do. This is a week of recognition. Also, I would like to make an announcement for Mary Moore from the library. This is a, an announcement from the Friends of the Smyrna Library. And the Friends of the Library invite you to attend the Second Annual Books and Brick Lego Exhibit. The event is this weekend in the Smyrna Community Center Magnolia Room. The exhibit will be created by the Dixie Lego Users Group, a club of adult Lego enthusiasts. Displays include moving trains, landscapes, townscapes, and unique individual creations. Activities include a free build station, crafts, and a reading corner. Tickets will be sold at the door. The tickets are $8 for ages 13 and older, $4 for ages 5 to 12, and free for ages 4 and younger. The hours are noon to 6:00 PM on Saturday, October 6th, and noon to 5:00 PM on Sunday, October 7th. The proceeds benefit the Youth Services Collection of the Smyrna Public Library. And with that, I yield.
Mr. Tim Goode.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We had our first committee meeting of the Education Committee, myself and Councilperson Wilkinson and Councilperson Blackburn. And a great meeting, a lot of enthusiasm. The possibilities are wide open for what we can do as a, as a council and as a city to help and put, impact and support our, our schools here in Smyrna. So, we're very, very excited and very enthused that the mayor and council saw a fit to form a, form the committee. So, I think it's a, it's a great thing. One of the specific things we'll, we'll work on is some pedestrian safety. There was an unfortunate incident recently by Argyle Elementary where a couple young kids were hit. I think they're fine physically, but it just highlights the need for us to focus on pedestrian safety for our families and kids near our schools. Also, want to touch on a project that Scott Andrews and Ashley Eumanns have been working on, this, the youth council. So, they just finished selecting their 11 talented high school students from three high schools in the, in our area. I can think orientation is this week. And it's a, it's a great program to help engage our, our students, our youth, into the city activities, and continue to tie our city into, more deeply into our schools. With that, I yield.
Mr. Ron Fennel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to announce that the Finance Committee's next meeting is on October 25th. We've had a challenge getting it scheduled properly about October 25th. We're having two meetings, I think, upcoming. This one to complete work on the finance and HR report outs. We'll have that one out soon, but that'll be all posted on the website. October 25th is the Finance Committee meeting, regular reports from our Finance Department, and our progress toward goal on the budget. Secondly, I want to just note that the, I want to thank the John Quill Golden K Kiwanis Club for inviting me to be their guest speaker a week ago Tuesday. I appreciate being with that team. I didn't get through my entire presentation because there were question after question after question. They're, they're a very curious, involved group of leaders in the Kiwanis Club, and I appreciate them inviting me to speak. And then finally, since we met last, the Atlanta Braves clinched the National League East pennant. We are now going to go to the We are now going to go to the National League Championship Series for the privilege of hosting the World Series right here in Cobb County on Smyrna's doorstep. Go Braves.
Ms. Jones?
No.
Mr. Andrews? Mr. Cochran? Ms. Graham? No? We do not have a show call hearing. We got one person signed up for Citizens Input, Alec Backrey, 3459 Shawnee Trail. Comments is his topic?
My first comment tonight is that we missed the deadline to consider term limits on the midterm ballot. I'd like to comment that I hope, in the new year, this council reconsider's doing a referendum on that. Marietta did it again and passed it, so I'm for it either way, whatever the people think about. Next year is an election year, so it'd be nice to have a referendum where people, especially new people, know where to go to vote on an issue. And I want to emphasize that if a council person is against it, you've got to remember, it's not the person on the council's opinion, it's the people that voted him in office. So you look at the majority, as well as the taxpayers pay their salary, so it should be what the people in your ward want, not what you think personally. Secondly, on this $300,000 you've got for a survey on rapid transit, I hope you consider sending that back, because you look at Concord Road, that two years to do it, and we still got just two-lane, two-lane. All we got was a center meeting, sidewalks, and a light at McCauley for $20 million. That doesn't do it. The roads are tight in Smyrna, and if they try to make a separate spot for, look at Wendy Hill as well, how much you're going to do to impede traffic? It just doesn't fit, and I think it's a waste, unless you deal with through the air, that the city cannot spend the money to do a rapid transit. I look at the buses that people are waiting for in Cobb County to go around Cobb. They're empty. And lastly, I hope this issue on buying that purchase on Spring Road is a dead issue. I think it's absolutely ridiculous to spend, even think about $15 million speculating with taxpayer money on something that we already have with the community center. I find this an absolute insane idea, and I hope this council ends that conversation on that. Again, you don't speculate with taxpayer money. You only have to look at what Hickory Lakes and Smyrna Commons did, speculating with our money, and the millions of dollars we lost. And I hope that's, as I say, there's nothing there that we don't already have with the community center we have. Thank you.
That concludes the Citizens Input. If there's no other business to be brought forth this body, I'd like to create this meeting adjourned at 7:51.